Just to remind everybody, our meeting runs by Robert's rules. And we'll try to adhere to those. We'll have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilwoman Kannable.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott, absent. Councilman Evil.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Moore.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes that were sent to you? Do we have any questions about those?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion about any of the minutes before we vote? Okay, no discussion, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved, this is sent, thank you. Okay, we have consideration fields over 2,000. I believe we have two.
And you guys got both of those in your packet. One of them's to Quill Consultants and one is to Warren and Associates.
Has everybody had a chance to look over? Any questions?
This is that Turkey Creek tank, correct?
Yes.
That was from back in, was that? That was earlier in the year, late last year.
Do you have any questions to ask about these charges? We have not gotten started on this project yet. We've done a lot of preliminary and there's a blueprint. It's 20,000 for that so far and then 4,125.
4,125.
This takes care of all the consulting though and all the...
Yeah, that's just a...
Just the...
Just a fair beginning.
What are we looking at, like down the road?
I don't know if y'all remember, you got one of these early on. But these are some of the projects that we still have that are being paid for. But for the Turkey Creek Water Plant, it's an ARC 50/50 match. So the whole, it's 277,000 total. So we would pay half of that.
Gotcha, this is just the consulting there in part, not the actual building, right?
This is just the very beginning, yeah. And again, it's for a blueprint and we still have an easement that we have to get before we can even begin the project.
We're waiting, are you?
We don't have it yet, no.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Quick question, just for the discussion. In y'all's past experiences on this, without the easement, are we still going to be covered on it? Are we, we're just basically, I don't know if this would be a question for Jerry or you?
I'll start, and then if Randy or Don either one wants to fill in. Basically, we've spoken with the property owner and they have given verbal permission.
Handwritten.
Handwritten.
So they got verbal written, okay.
Via an email.
It's just got to go through books and all that?
Right now, what we're trying to do is actually formalize that in the form of an easement. And that easement format has been provided. Sometimes it takes a while to catch people and these folks are in and out of their office. It's two people in partnership, I believe, is correct, so.
Two sisters in their late 60s and neither one of them go into the office. And so the secretary is going to have to come together. I have a written permission that I can provide that to you. I probably hit to the mayor a month ago on the 20th. Well, I don't have a copy. I think you said you had an email. All I have is the document that has to be signed yet. I don't have the email.
But we got someone, we got someone writing though.
Well, it hasn't been signed, but where's the document? You sent a... It's a survey and an easement document, but it hasn't been signed as yet.
That's correct, Mayor. That document hasn't been signed, but we've gotten permission from the land. We're just trying to formalize that with the...
Yeah, this one. Okay, yes, this is what we have. It's an easement that, I guess, did you write this up, Mr. Warren? I don't know.
We prepared it with the assistance of our program.
Okay, and then it's got a survey that has been done.
Yes.
With an easement, but we, I think until we get this signed, we can't really formally go forward, can we? Legally, I don't know.
You wouldn't be able to access the property or make construction without some permission, a right of entry or a sign of easement?
And that's basically what we have, is the right of entry. Okay. The discussions. It's not unusual in these cases sometimes to go ahead and get the project, get everything lined up while we're sorting through the easement process. That's fairly difficult on many projects.
Would you say, like, just for future reference, would it be abnormal to make sure the easement would be good to go? That's what I'm asking, just so I know. Did you at base say, well, if we did this, would we be able to get an easement? And they said, yeah, and so you just kind of worked on it all based on that? Was that the process?
Yes, that's exactly what...
Okay, gotcha, alright.
And this is just, we could talk about this outside the meeting necessarily, but is that going to be a permanent access easement to the site? To the new town?
The way we have it written, yes, it would be for access to the site, I believe.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions.
So we have a motion and a second to accept these. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of accepting these invoices? Okay. Any opposed? Okay. The next one is a citizen's concern, actually...
Just for clarification, was the motion for both Mr. Warren's and Quill's?
Was it?
I think it was.
Yes, there were two separate agenda items, I just wanted to make sure the record was...
I don't think we didn't call for line items, so.
Okay.
Tip Reed, who I guess many of you know, was supposed to be here tonight. He just has a concern. He said he was on one of the city streets and a little child ran out in front of him. He just wants to make sure that we have proper protection for these children when they're out anywhere on the street doing the solicitations.
I agree with him, and I'd like to bring up the point that particularly they had a roadblock about two weekends ago. And there were children out in the road at the intersection of Industrial Drive and Highway 25. And to me, that's incredibly dangerous. And at least for the time being, I think we maybe need to address that. I was going to talk to y'all, but they finally, they already wound it up. But, I mean, small kids staying out there and cars going ways faster than they should is dangerous.
If you would like, we can stop that altogether, but y'all fix that intersection if you like and get the light back up and operational if you like.
I think that intersection, it is a big...
Would I, you want to make that into a form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do not allow roadblock participation at the corner of Highway 25 and Industrial Drive until the light is fixed.
Second.
Second, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? And the chief, did you give us, this is sort of the rules and regulations when you have a chance to read it about how the roadblocks are supposed to be set up. So thank you, chief, for this.
Yes.
And if you have questions, I'm sure he'll be open to answering it for you. Okay. Okay, thank you, Senator. Alright. So, Mayor's report, okay. I just want to highlight a couple of things here, because I know there's some confusion tax-wise right now in our county. Just so everybody knows, Carthage property taxes are not changing. Ours are not tied into the counties at all. So our property taxes will stay 1.258. Gordonsville, South Carthage, Carthage, we're all totally separate from the county, so just to let everyone know that. As you know, we still have our 3/4% sales tax, which is really wonderful, because otherwise we would have lost about $400,000 in the coming year. We have a really good reserve. So I just want everybody to know that we're in a really good financial standing here, thanks to hardworking folks, yes, sir.
Now that we get the full 3/4, won't we get essentially twice that?
If the county doesn't come back in again.
Right, for now.
We don't know yet what's going to happen about that, but...
Yeah, I wonder if that was even done, because I've heard a lot of things, that that last 3/4 was not done properly. Like, we should have benefited more on that, on the city side.
I thought we would have benefited less, because the way I understood it, it was designed to, for building schools.
Yeah, well, the last, that last 3/4 penny, the way that it's tied into the 1976 penny, which is the second penny. And that benefits more population centers. So heart, like your cities, Gordonsville, they'll benefit off that 3/4 penny, because it's based on where the penny's collected.
Right.
Where the other, the 1967 or 69 penny or whatever, that's based on population. They spread it among where the population is, so. But I think, yeah, that 3/4 penny...
Well, and we also, the town of Carthage and Gordonsville passed this a year before the county did, back in 1998. So we had it for a full year until the county then decided to also increase it. So that's how we got to keep it, because once they, the county voted to take their part off, our law continued, because it never changed. So thank goodness that would...
Yeah, so like, if they wanted to take it off or add it, they'd have to have a city referendum, it wouldn't be a county referendum. I mean, it's not happening, but I'm saying that that was. So with the, what, to clarify for everybody, when the county voted it off, it just took it out of all the county. Didn't take it out of the city, so that way everybody understands.
And same thing for Gordonsville. The only other thing I want to say, we're still working on the Fall State classes. We're getting very close to it. We had a meeting with the Board of Education. Mr. Nick Bishop from Fall State came and Mayor Mason came, and we all three met with the Board of Education. And they're very excited about the possibility of getting classes here in the fall. If we can work it right, they will need a resource, SRO, to man safety purposes. And then they'll need a facilitator who can work the computer part of it. So that's the only two people. It could be one combined, we're thinking about that.
Where's the location?
It's possibly going to be at the high school. The chamber is the backup, because they already set up technology for that. But it would be two nights a week, is what they're thinking about, like a Tuesday and Thursday and basic classes. But there's still little pieces that have to be put together to make that happen. But Mayor Mason's on board, the Board of Education appears to be on board, so I think this may happen. It'd be great for the kids.
That puts us up in rankings too, as far as being able to provide college education. I think that gets us on a good track for, you know, future rankings to allow, opens us up for more, as far as an attractive place to live in.
If I understand correctly, it also increases the scholarship money available to kids in this county. From Fall State, places like that.
Yeah, it's great. And people coming back who maybe haven't finished can come back and with the, I always forget the name of it, but it's a special thing that they can get back and get their tuition free too.
Good attraction.
Yeah. And this could eventually lead into technical classes specifically for some of the industry here to get certification for their people. So it seems like we're in the start of something that could really be helpful for our county here. That's all I have to say. The next report is our attorney, please.
I don't have a formal report. I will, except I will say that I did pull some ordinances regarding special events from several other cities. There's nothing on the agenda tonight. And if anybody has any input you want to provide moving forward. I know that the event for next year was approved, and certainly wouldn't expect that to change. But I think sometime in the future, we may want to consider a special event permit ordinance to put in place, just to, so you have a process. And again, I pulled maybe a half a dozen ordinances. Well, I didn't know if it was ready for further discussion. I haven't drafted anything. I haven't done anything more than to review what some other cities have. And I'm glad to provide that to y'all. I didn't know how you wanted to receive that information and move it forward. But just wanted to let you know that was in the works and we'll let y'all and the mayor direct that move forward.
Maybe you can bring it forward next time.
I think that's positive, not necessarily having to add a fee to it or anything, because obviously we want to keep a low cost. But just so it's fair, in case somebody else wants to have an event, we're not just tailoring to certain areas. It's open to everybody to be able to do that. So just having that formal process is...
Needs to be standardized.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, city report.
I don't really have a whole lot. Our new employee Cindy started a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if any of you guys have gotten to meet her yet, but she's doing great. We love having her. And the rest of us are just trying to get used to her position and training and cross-training on everything. So we're trying to move in a good direction and that's really all it's got.
They'll have to give lots of kudos. Our office staff has done an amazing job to step up and retrain the past couple of months. So I want to thank them for the hard work they put into that. Okay, police chief. Hi. Chief Davis, there you are.
I don't think we have a report, if things going good. Concerns or questions following meetings, but everything's going good so far.
Good to hear.
Status quo with you?
Great, thank you. Public works.
I don't think y'all got any questions.
Okay. Y'all are out there keeping our lawn's mow, it looks really nice. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, all of you. Anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to report, everything's going smoothly.
Okay, we're flushing all of those hydrants and doing a great job. Wonderful.
Lot of water.
Is that helping with the water quality going with the flushing?
It's safe, the next test will really determine.
Okay.
So we'll move on to Ms. Teresa, the water plant.
No, I don't have anything either.
Okay. Alright, that's good, that's good. Nothing blowing out that cost a thousand, a hundred thousand, that's good.
Not today.
Okay. Okay, our wastewater plant, Mr. Steve?
We don't have anything either, everything's good. It's working alright.
Alright, I like that. Mr. Joe, any...
Reason to report for meeting, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Wonderful, okay. So we'll move on to unfinished business. I would like to give an update on the brush pickup, which is a good one. I know we've all been kind of hit hard by this brush situation, because TDEC kind of gave our landfill a situation where perhaps there were permits that weren't there. But the good news is, I've been in conversations with Mayor Mason. And we have talked, I have talked to two different TDEC offices, he has also. And it looks as if we're going to be able, if it all works out properly, because this is still unattentive, but we may be able, if we, if the brush is chipped, they can take it there. They can also use chip brush for the roads out there, which would benefit the landfill. So what we're trying to negotiate, he and I and the TDEC, is to start picking our brush up again, taking it to the landfill. They will have this humongous chipper thing that they put it in, and then they can use the chippings to, for all the roads throughout. We thought maybe they could use it to cover and help this buzzard situation we have, but it can't be used for that. They do have some other materials, but, and they're also going to work a little harder at TDEC on our buzzard situation at the same time, because that's how this conversation really came up to begin with. So the good news is, it looks like we may be able to start picking up again, once this is all negotiated. I had to talk a little more with Mayor Mason and work out some of the kinks on it.
I'm just curious, you say use it on the roads?
Well, you know how they have to go around between the, not our roads, but out there in the landfill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to chip the roads rather than gravel it or whatever.
They have a chipper there?
They're going...
So you're saying the road would be, have to be a chip service?
That's all he told me, they could use it on the roads. I assumed he was talking about the landfill roads out there. But that would help them, he just said it would be helpful for them also. So I'm just, we're just fairly into this. I'll try to find out more about what roads he's talking about, but...
Mayor, there are roads in the landfill.
I thought of, oh, okay.
And they're usually moved.
Okay, well, that's probably where he was talking about.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sure that's what he's talking about, that they could use it out there. But it would be a win-win for everybody if we can do this. So I'm really, I thank Mayor Mason, he's been very good to work with us on this, so I really appreciate it very much.
Do we have a time?
We're still working out the kinks, but I think it'll be soon, very soon. And if we do start doing this, we'll be able to pick it up once a month and take it out there, so.
Sorry, a bit, not a weekly thing, but once a month.
Right, probably the first Monday and Tuesday of each month. And I would ask, if you do, please don't put it in the street. We've seen some of this in the street and we can't, you can't leave in the street, that's a safety hazard. So please put it on the side of your road, right by the street, and they can pick it up then. But I'm very pleased that Mayor Mason has worked with us on this.
Like on the curb?
On the curb, but not in the street. Not in the street, yes.
Okay, I have to move that.
Close. There you go, push it back a little bit. Okay, but again, I just really want to thank him for helping us with this, because he's really stepped up to do that. I appreciate it. Okay, so the next one is, okay, the Water Street lot now. Where's Mr. Bass? Okay, Habitat has decided to take those lots, which is a good thing. And he has the deed that he's going to bring tonight, so less than, all the group won't have to keep taking care of that. And they're going to actually be able to put a house in one. There's two separate lots, so they'll put a house in one, and the other lot will be either a patio or whatever they want to use it for. So Habitat has agreed to take that, but...
My one concern on that is, and again, there's nothing against Habitat. I want to make sure, I think there was conditions that this lot was given to the city on the basis of having something to help with the drainage. And so I don't want to make sure...
There's two lots.
There's two lots, and so like, if they're doing a patio, like, I mean, I get what you're saying, like, maybe they can, maybe they can put a house there possibly, as long as they're doing the drainage. But I want to make sure we don't, we look into this before we sign something away, because if we violate that, then basically someone gave us the property.
Less, do you know?
They'll have to leave the curb, or they won't be able to take it curb.
Well, do you know if they're going to build two houses or one?
No, 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 just one house.
Just one, so with the lot that Citizens Bank gave us, it'll still be empty?
Right.
And they're going to build on that one next, that cul-de-sac at the end? Okay. Can I just ask, the city looks into that before we sign anything with Habitat? Just making sure that everyone, we're rocking and fucking rolling on that?
And these are city-owned lots currently that we received with some sort of condition. I mean, and Mr. Bass, we're here, but I think the council's going to need to approve that anyway. So it'll need to come back and we'll review it before that, so.
Yes, sir.
Can we possibly put in the deed, not really a restriction, but a condition that proper drainage be approved for the runoff going behind the lot?
Yes, I don't know if that's in, certainly we can put that in there, yeah.
Because, I mean, if they build that up, it's going to dump more on other people's property, and we don't want to do it.
Sorry, I wasn't...
I believe there's a drainage, isn't there a drainage line? Yeah, sorry, it's drainage.
We should ensure that it's kept proper.
I mean, I think we didn't get it for nothing, so it didn't cost anything except for maintenance. So getting it off our books is a good thing, just making sure that we do what we said we would do is all I'm concerned about, that we were, people were aware on it, so.
No, we'll check that out. Check it, make sure, we'll come back. Let me ask you this, if we check it out and it does seem to check out, do you want to go ahead or you want to wait till next month?
I think it's a big thing for us to discuss it, yeah.
Yeah, and again, because some of these issues, I mean, it may be something even that we want to put additional restriction and easement on it for drainage before the deed is signed, so.
Well, it's going to benefit everybody if we can make something happen with our property. I just want to make sure that we're not...
That's a good point.
We're not, you know, violating something like, if I gave property to somebody and they, we said, it has to be, something has to happen with it, you know, I just want to make sure that they could work on it, so.
We'll do that. I thought Mr. Bass was going to be here tonight, but I'll talk to him about that. Okay. Okay, this next one, let me kind of explain what we're talking about. If you remember, where's the... Okay, this is something we kind of dealt with early on, that letter that was sent last year saying that these two loans, or these two applications for loans couldn't go forward, because we had to come up... I'm sorry. Oh, the leases.
The Stevens Street lease.
Okay, we did come up and we sent you a copy of the leases for the spot in the museum. And I think y'all got one, and I think there's, we've got some extras here if you want it, we'll send it to you email. Basically, it's the same language in both, except one is the old, you know, the old post office building with the spot is, and now, and then the rest is the museum. And then there is a separate area that's called the Performance Hall, that that's the one we're hoping to get the electricity up to codes in. But Mr. Harper still hasn't been able to get around to that. Once we get that in place, then we'll have a separate lease for that area to hopefully make a little money on this, and maybe other people can have some events there. But we just really need to, we need to make at least a little bit on this building, because we put an awful lot into it.
This room you're talking about, is it solely, we can use it for other purposes besides just museum using it, correct?
Yeah, it'll be leased out for functions, hopefully, once we get it, so.
Who would they go through?
And that's always been the plan for that, would be for it to be leased out to whoever...
A public thing.
Yeah.
So who do they go through?
Well, to the city for the...
The city and not the museum, yeah?
Yeah. We would have to use their bathroom, so we may have to make an arrangement for them to get something for that. As we progress with this, we may have to put bathrooms in that area.
So is there entrance to that room?
Will come through the museum.
From the outside? They don't go through the museum?
Well...
Well, they would have to for the restrooms. That's why I kind of see it as a partnership between them, between you and the city.
Well, I got a call from...
As long as it, we don't have to go through the museum to use the...
Well, they're okay with that, too.
They're okay with the restrooms.
Oh, you mean lease it from, renting it from them?
Yeah. Well, I got a call from one of the board members right before the meeting, and they want to be put on the agenda for August. The museum does to discuss the lease with us, because I think they have some issues with the Performance Hall. So, and I don't know what those exactly are, but, I mean, we'll just let them, we at least deserve to let them air their, whatever they have, you know? Do we, and first off, thank you for waiting on this for the council, I appreciate that. The other part was, do we, are we in a rush to get this knocked out, or can we wait for that?
Well, right now, we don't have a lease for either person, so we're sort of liable if anything happens there.
What I was going to say, and I saw this is like a three-year lease and...
Well, then we decided we could cut it back to one. Did you get the latest?
Yeah, I guess I didn't see that, I saw, yeah. Yeah, I saw that one. The year lease. That was going to be a suggestion of mine, so, okay.
Was there a reason we want to go from three to one?
I think it would be good, just, I mean, because we can look at it again, you know, let's say we find some other opportunities that pop up in the future for that building or for other buildings. We don't want to have our hands tied to a lease, you know?
For three years.
You know, for three years, and we can move it back and forth. And if everything's rolling steady and nothing comes up, we can just renew it year by year. But, you know, we want to keep our options open. If we don't have to, and everybody seems it's a pretty friendly lease, why not?
I would prefer it be a three-year lease. If it's going well and you do have the 90-day either person can...
Are you talking about the spot or the museum?
I think both, a three-year lease. A one-year lease, if we put, say, we talked about me putting the ceiling in the room that we were going to use. Well, if you have a one-year lease, you're not going to want to invest much money in it, not knowing if the next year it won't be renewed. I think a three-year lease would be a lot more fair, and it's still minimal, because they had a 10-year lease to begin with, the museum did.
Could we put a part of lease in there that says, like, if we end up doing something and you invest into it, you know, part of it gets paid back? And we do, because what I'm saying is...
The city would want to do that.
Let's just, you know, let's just say an opportunity presents itself, you know, that we could, the city can make money on, or we end up finding that something would fit really well there. I mean, I don't know what this opportunity could be. But then we say, well, we got to turn this down, because we're stuck in a three-year lease. And, yes, there is 90 days and all that, but, I mean, I just, I really feel like if we don't have to, why do we, why do we want to commit to three years on something, you know? And like I said, I don't foresee anything...
Because you have good tenants there that are really putting a lot of time and money into the community and the building?
I got you.
Thank you.
Yeah, then I was, you know, no one's arguing the benefits or anything like that. This is business, it's not a motion. I'm just saying, maybe a good business decision would be, you know, let's leave our options open past a year, is all I'm saying.
You still have the 90-day clause in here, so.
I got you, but, and also, all due respect, Barbara, you work at the spot, and so there's somewhat of a conflict of interest of you wanting a larger lease.
I volunteer at the spot.
You volunteer at the spot, got you. Even though you volunteer and you don't get paid, it's still a position that you have. And so that's a conflict of interest on a city lease running to an organization that's a nonprofit. It's still a conflict of interest. So I'm not saying, I love the spot, I love the museum...
We have a vote, yes, and I'm recommending a three-year lease.
Okay. And I would definitely recommend, one year, I also recommend we listen to see what they have to say at the museum, because the museum, that's a big part. I mean, that's a huge part of our Smith County history right there. So maybe they're not happy with something, maybe they want to invest more, we don't know. And I don't think it's wise to do a three-year lease with that, especially not knowing what they're doing.
Well, I suggest we wait till next month and have them on the agenda, and listen to them, and then let's go forward.
I agree, yeah.
And then we settle, one year, three year, whatever.
So I guess the...
My question only, let me just ask, if we don't have a lease during that time, is that a problem?
It's not... It's not any greater problem than it's been for six months.
Normally, don't you get a, it's basically a month by month lease anyway?
It is, yeah. The lease terms will continue to apply, you know, there's a holdover tenant basically, so. So they're motioned to table.
Do we have a lease with the spot, I don't know.
You know, yeah, you and I have already talked about that. We've never had a lease and I've never had an issue either. So I think another month probably won't hurt anything. We've never had a lease. We, we've always had a great relationship with the city, never had any issues, so.
So would you want to motion to table till next month?
I'll make a motion that we table the lease situation until next month.
All right, I'll second you.
All right. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of tabling it to next month? Any opposed? Okay, so we'll table the lease till next month. Okay, so then we could move on to... Oh, okay, now we're, now we're this way, okay. You remember? These letters, we had these letters early on that were from November 18th from T-DAC. And I'll pass this around to you again, I don't know what this got into, concerning these two loans. And basically, this was, these were loans that were applied for, I think, back in 2017 originally. And the requirements, because one was 412,000, one was 375,000. The state said in order to do this, that we would have to increase $136,000 a year and probably increase our water and sewer rates. I have here... We've kind of done a comparison because the state finally said, basically, there are better loans. You remember the ladies from the revolving fund loans said there would be better loans coming up in August if we could hold off. And we need to get these off the books to try even to get those new loans. I've got, we got some estimates. The water line that you're, that we're more concerned about, 412,000. I actually had a couple of people, engineers, just to take a quick look at that. Just to kind of give us an idea about those.
Let's say we table this, though, could we be, because I know that there's already...
Let me kind of show you what I got from there, then we can talk about that a little bit more. Okay, I just, just because if we do, if we do, if we could save, for instance, $200,000, which, which we can't on this water line that we're talking about. I had a couple of engineers come and take a look. One was used, from Charlie Jackson's outfit that used to help, he was the engineer for a while here with the county, the city. It's, they're, they're in Nashville and they just, it's the same, it's called ductile iron lines, it's the kind we're using as opposed to the plastic PVC or whatever it is. And for their, theirs, they said basically they could do it for a little over $100,000. This is just an email they sent me. Then, then another company out of Lafayette actually did, broke it down a little bit more and they could do it for $148,000. That's the total cost including engineering and everything. So that's what a third of the cost of the others. So just from a pure business point of view, if we could, if we could hold off until August to see what kind of loans we might could get to help with something like that and maybe send out a request for proposal, request for qualifications. If we can save $200,000, I just think it's, we're trying, that's what we're here for, just try to save as much as we can for our city.
What are we on the line for right now, though? Because I know that we did...
Well, there's, there's nothing, because nothing was ever approved. These, these loans were never approved, but that's what he's saying in the letter. They, they don't have an approval as yet.
The loan's not approved, but did, in looking up the loan, did we have, or do we have anything that's, like, do we owe Mr. Warren any money on it or anything? That's what I'm curious about.
Well, we'll have to find out, but...
Yes, you will.
How much would we owe you?
I'd have to look at it to tell you approximately, but it's, I mean, we've done quite a bit of work on both of these projects that y'all are going to be talking about, so.
Probably owe you too, wouldn't we? No, we don't have anything. So like on these...
We have a blueprint, basically.
If, do you have to be like state-qualified? Does that make sense? Like, do you have to be like a preferred vendor with the state or, does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense, and I don't...
I don't know the best way to word it, but like...
These particular projects, because Main Street's not a state highway. But, I mean, as information, we are an unlimited consultant with T-DAC, so T-DAC works all the time.
This is down Futural Alley.
I'm sorry.
This is the one down Futural Alley I'm talking about, not the...
Yes, ma'am, but one of these, the other sewer project, the next one actually ties into Upper Perry Road. And all of that would be, Upper Perry was done as part of the T-DAC project here as well. But nonetheless, these would have to be reviewed and approved by T-DAC, which plans were submitted. Plans have been prepared, all preliminary engineering, environmental reviews, all the administrative issues have been addressed. So those are the, the costs that have been incurred this far.
So like Futural Alley, we're talking about the same project as Third and Main, it's still Futural Alley, so we're still...
It runs Futural Alley to Third and goes up to the corner of Kemp's.
Like goes in front of your building, then say cross in front of Main Street and on mine and then go down? Is that diagonal, goes diagonally across, is that right? From like Cole's building to my building and then down?
Yeah.
Can, can you, could you get us a cost of what, let's say we, let's say we decided not to, could you get us a cost of what it would be that, as far as investment you have into it?
Yeah, I can get you a cost. I mean, I can tell you right now that both of them are probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50,000 dollars each.
Forty, fifty? Is that, you're talking about the Iron Island Spring and then also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this, is this just the one for Third and Main?
Because I'm, if you were looking at this, I'm, I'm sorry. In fact, part of the conversation with some of our crew here was, okay, the inspection fees and everything are, total for this estimate is 23,000. That's, that's for them to step in and do everything. And then on top of that, it's 124,000 for the construction costs. So I'm just trying to save us some money here in the city. And for 148,000 or 100,000, we're looking at the same price that the engineering cost of 107,000 would be on this estimate. So I, I just think, we have to think in terms of how do we save money for our city, I guess the sound that you...
Jerry, the work that you've done is, can any of that be applied if we go for the project on a different loan? Or do we just throw it out?
Well, if, I mean, if we were the engineers on that, yes, otherwise, basically.
Would be starting over.
That's a different deal. That would, that's probably another discussion, part of the hell with other people, so.
Are the plans in a place where they would basically be ready to be bid out? If we, if the town could use those, but with agreement with you to...
Yes, the plans and specs have been prepared, they were submitted to T-DAC. But my understanding is they were taken from T-DAC and brought back here to City Hall, so.
And just to, and so we don't make a rushed decision, I'm wondering if it would be proper to get that, get that cost of what it would be if we switched over and see the cost comparison? And then also see if these other, also maybe have these other engineering firms come in and, and check them. You know, that way we have a bidding, bidding project as far as, because if we can set, like, I mean, I agree with the mayor on this. If we can save a couple hundred thousand dollars, we can. I mean, obviously it'll cost us some to save a couple hundred thousand, but let's just say it's a couple hundred thousand, we have to minus deduct 50,000, it's still 150,000 we're saving taxpayers, so.
And if I may, Cole, we, the estimates that were prepared before, I mean, we didn't come up with the estimated cost, just, we didn't make that up. We basically used numbers based on bids that we have received on other projects and other utilities of the city.
Exactly. And that's why I think it'd be beneficial to have these other ones come in, so that way we make sure we're comparing apples to apples. And, and I think that, do you think that'd be fair to make sure we're doing that?
Sure.
And maybe we could table till next meeting.
I just feel like with that big of a spread, something's missing. It's in my, in my experience, I've come into places and, you know, like, I say, well, this, this project I'm going to do for you is going to cost $20,000. Well, so-and-so can do it for five. Well, so-and-so is going to, you know, end up costing you $30,000 more over the lifetime. And so I feel like there's, with that big of a spread, if it was like, you know, if we're within like 75,000, then I think you could look at it as like, maybe there's something. But with that huge of a spread, it's like, something's missing.
I agree, and that's why I think it would be beneficial to table this till next time, so that way we can make sure and be able to ask those questions and see if, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. Because we might find in there that, yeah, they're not doing this and Jerry was doing all that. Or we might find out we had a cost savings. It could be either or, but I think it'd be fair to have multiple people come in. And that way, you know, that way we can make sure we're getting as much of the tax paradigm saved. I mean, they might come in where they are 75 over or 50 over, and it costs us 50 to get out. Jerry would say, well, just move forward. We don't, we don't know. And so that's, that's what I'm saying, like, I've, I've, I've got to go either with her word, his word, and if we get, we get other, multiple words in, we can make a more informed decision as a council.
It's not so much my word. Obviously, I have to make a copy of this and you can compare to this just to get a start.
And I think it'd be, that's what I have explained.
And if I may, their estimates, our estimates, they're all just that. They are educated estimates. We make our estimates based on the work we've seen, the projects we've worked on. I'm assuming they're making the same. I will agree with you, Matt, that sometimes if they're just asked to do an estimate on, say, a thousand feet of water line, this water line just happens to all be under the street. Everything's going to have to be repaired. This is not just a water line job. This is a paving job, this is a Main Street job, this is a keep everybody in service job.
Yeah.
There's quite a bit of consideration.
Digging six feet down the middle of Main Street.
With respect to everybody involved, when we will know what the cost is, is when the job is bid out.
And that's, and that's a good, that's a good point to make sure we're checking on, also time, you know, how long is it going to take? How long are we going to be shut down right there? You know, are we going to be doing this, Derek, when we have some of these events going on? You know, those are all different, different variables. We, you know, I think it'd move everybody to see those variables and make sure, because let's say we decide to go with this right now, we might make sure, we might not have, we, we might find out we're going with you and we could save somebody, I don't know.
The one thing we've seen just from working on downtown water lines here, putting the meters in and working with the folks here in the city, there's a lot of old lines in cartons. And nothing is exactly what you think it is until you put that back in the bucket in the ground.
That's garbage.
And there's no telling what's going to be found when you start digging. I mean, I'm just being straight out and honest with y'all. I think Les, Derek, any of the guys here will tell you the same thing.
It's like when I renovated my building, it's 100 years old, there was, it's, you know what it is next door. I mean, it's like you...
I've got pipes that are not, I'm like, where did this pipe come from, you know?
You know, and then you have to replace, you want to replace one thing, you replace four other things to make that one thing work.
Yep, yep.
Just to get there.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I just say that just to make y'all aware, we made an estimate. We stand by that estimate, but it's simply that.
What, what's the process? Let's say we go over or under, what's the process? I'm just curious from my knowledge, like, let's, if...
Matt, I, I guess, go ahead.
Let's ask your first question, then I'd like to make a motion.
I'm, I'm curious.
Are you talking about just the bidding process?
Yeah, let's say he's, you know, he's, he's been, he's estimating 412. Let's say we get into it and it becomes up to 550. I mean, is there, are we stuck with it or like how does?
Well, depending on how your bid is let, and what the specs say, and what kind of bids you give back and how the contract is set up as far as, you know, any cost adjustments
or if it's a not-to-exceed price that you're asking for, you know, then if Jerry said, that'll set what the cost is going to be. You, you can always have provisions, you know, anytime you're digging that might provide for some contingencies like, you know, unexpected rock or other things in there that might bump that up. But you, you'll have public bids submitted, any, any of these contractors or anybody else that thinks they can do the work. And whatever it comes out to be, that's what you end up with.
And it might be that this is the best option right here. You know, I just, I'd like to, I think, you know, especially if we could get better loans, one, and better, possibly better terms, maybe not. I mean, he might have better contingencies than they do. Thing is, I don't know, I don't feel like I can make a informed decision on it. So, I mean, I'd, I'd recommend that we just table this, see if we can get them to come out, make sure that we're getting apples to apples, lining these up.
Would you mind if we put our FQ out just to see what, what bids and estimates we could get back? And then we have an overview.
Well, there are two, the, the, until you have specs that you can send out for people to submit bids, well, and again, those are his.
Those are his, yeah, yeah.
But, but he's done work that the town's obligated to pay him. And I think in, hoping that in working out and moving forward, the town could say, okay, we'll, we'll pay what owed and use the plans moving forward with, with his firm's involvement to bid it out. Now, that's all just speaking off the top of my head, but that seems like the most reasonable thing to do.
Well, let's say this, um, those specs that, I mean, the estimates that you did, those include federal money and there's labor compliance and stuff like that. So those, that, you're comparing two different things right there. Because one, if you do the work with federal money, there has to be some administrative, because there are, federal money is a lot harder to administer. But if you pay for it out of your own pocket, then you don't have to do all the Davis Bacon and all that stuff. So that's probably why that there's a difference in there.
That's actually, that's actually a point that... Because you have to have American iron steel, wage rates, Davis Bacon, there's several requirements. Those are built into the specifications.
Actually, our guys and several engineers we've talked with have actually said that we might be better in the long run if we could do it for 100, 125, just to go ahead and pay for it ourselves. Because we're paying for a fraction of what would, we would be paying otherwise. We have to go through all the loan process.
I feel it's worth looking into more, you know, you know, so, I mean, I guess what I would do is I'd just, I'd like to make a motion to table this till next month so we have more information to make a, a better decision is all.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling this till next month? Aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll table this till next month, thank you.
Does that cover number four and five?
So you've got number five, too.
That's just four.
Okay, so then, okay, number six, we're going to get an update?
Does that cover number five as well?
Oh, yes, yes. It's both. Because that one's...
Is that what you meant your motion to be for both of those?
Did you make your motion for both or just for the water?
Technically, I made it for one, so if I, I'll make another motion to table it for number five as well.
Or just amend it before.
Or I can amend it before, well, proper rule, proper rule of order, we are voted on it, so.
Can we, can we overrule his motion and start over?
I'll just make a second motion to table number five.
We'll table on both.
Sounds good, okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, so we, we will table both of those items till next month?
We have to call vote to that.
There's a motion, a second discussion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of tabling number five? Okay, all opposed? Great, thank you. Number six, going to update on, Jennifer filed a claim, could you tell us about?
I did. At y'all's request, I filed a claim with them. I'd already spoken on the phone with them and they had told me that they wouldn't cover it. But I did, I did get an email from the claims rep at Public Entity, which used to be TMO. And they stated that the traffic signal at Highway 25 and Industrial is not listed on the BPP scheduled locations and therefore is not covered. So they won't pay for a claim for the traffic light.
So here's what we found out on number seven. I did call Stansel again to find out, first of all, if we do go ahead and fix what's left to fix on this. Remember, it started out 18,000 and it's now down to 13, so we could actually fix the traffic signal for 13. As far as the loop, the loop is not good anymore, but what they have suggested, instead of paying $5,000 for a new loop just for that one place, for them to time it like they have done the ones around town, and they can time it for two car lengths coming out of Industrial, which wouldn't keep people there that long and would still keep the, the traffic flowing pretty well.
But would it still, if it's a loop and it's timed, would it still be pressure sensitive?
Well, no. The loop... Well, no, we, the loop would be five. The loop would be five thou- no, no, but they do, the loop would be five thousand, that's one choice. If we don't pay that extra five thousand, which puts us back up to eighteen thousand dollars, they can time it, just like all the other lights are in town, so you can time it, say, coming out of Industrial Drive for two car lengths or three car lengths, that you've got green, and then it goes back to, so that, that's basically what we have all over town.
I, I've got to experience y'all's light.
Yeah, it's about a twenty minute.
Awful.
Yeah.
Yeah. People were going ahead and shooting at it.
Yeah, and I, and I get why, I got all the phone calls on it, too, because it is awful, um, and I know from the frustration of having a light that's not pressure close to me, um, and you know, I hate to, you know, I hate to, you know, I don't wanna spend more money on it, but if that's how it was before.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good use of the money.
I, I think it would be beneficial.
For sure.
Yeah, cause we get a lot of, we get a situation down there, there's a lot of particularly McColl's trucks that use that heading out, and a lot of times, if you just had it set for two cars, you'd get about half of a truck out there, and that'd be it.
Well, I mean, you could set it for more if you just.
Yeah, we need to, if we did it that way.
But I think we just pay the money, and just, we were planning on spending eighteen, let's spend eighteen and it'd be done.
How much have we already spent? Three, three thousand?
No, we've already spent, uh, forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
Yeah. I thought we were spending twenty.
And what was that for?
For the repair to get the light put back up?
Right.
When they took it, when that truck moved it down.
Altogether it'll be.
Forty-eight and eighteen, so twenty-two, five, twenty-two, eight.
Almost twenty-three.
The new loop is forty-one fifty, is what's on the.
Okay, so.
Is it, okay.
Yes, forty-one fifty.
Right.
And then thirteen nine forty-three is the rest.
I mean, I, I, now, I mean, again, like I said, I don't like spending more money, but that's how it was, and I see, you know, I s- I see that being beneficial and obviously affecting our economy better as far as, so. I'd say, yeah, we gotta, we need to get it fixed, so.
So, do I have a motion that we?
Make a motion that we repair it all the way with the loop and everything.
With the loop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Repair, what's the loop for forty-one?
It's forty-one hundred.
Forty-one fifty.
Second, did I, second, okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we will call them tomorrow and take care of our event.
Good.
All righty. Uh, number eight, Mr. Eagle.
So last meeting, I asked the city to talk to the county about possibly doing a shared engineering plan that would help save the city money, help save the county money, and, um, did y'all?
Well, we did a little investigative, and the, the thing that we ran into is sometimes there would be a conflict between what the county might need and the city. I mean, it, it, and it might be tough, uh, even, um, some of the county folks were true about that, but what are y'all's thoughts on that?
I can definitely say, well, we could run into some conflicts, and I don't think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I've got that.
Just what I'm thinking about, but I don't think it's logical to do.
Um, what, can you give me like a circumstance, just so I understand? Were, were we not running into conflicts, or if you, Sam?
If we had a project that was in conflict, but a project maybe the county wanted, and this, how does the engineer help us on?
Maybe like the leak tank line or something?
There was an engineer who, who brought this up, he himself, and said, he gave a conflict for a ci- city that he had worked with, helping them with, I can't remember, it was a sewer system or something, and then they ended up going in a different direction, so the suit he said sued him because of what he'd done. So he said it's a little iffy for an engineer, too, from that side.
I'll tell you what, I'll, let me do some more investigating, and until I can get some answers on it, I'll just, I'll, I'll file a table on it, you know, I, I'm just trying to find some ways to save some money, so.
What I would kind of like to see us do, and we haven't done in a while here, is just when we have projects, to, to do a request for proposal, or request for qualifications, and just see how many potential good engineers we can bring in, and then choose our own for, specific to each project. We have not been doing that in the past, and it might.
Can we do it where we don't have necessarily an engineer tied in, but we can bid out engineers, is that, is that?
You can't bid based on, uh, the cost. You can do requests for qualifications to say, you know, to have solicit, um, basically resumes from engineers and choose from whoever you think's the most qualified for that particular project or service.
For instance, we might have a sewer project where there's a really great engineer who's one of the leading engineers around that we happen to have in this area. Or we might have a construction project of some kind that is a whole different thing.
Yeah, okay.
I, I just personally feel we, we get the best bang for our buck, if you will, if we put out a request for qualifications to see who, who's the expert.
I mean, I'm fine, especially if it's gonna, if that's a way to possibly save money, I mean, I'm fine with it. You know, the, my, my point is not, you know, not anything but, you know, trying to save money.
Right, I understand.
And I, I mean, I get what you're saying, there could be, uh, conflict interest there, and I don't know if I'd answer that, so I don't, I'm gonna push it more.
You also tend to lose some continuity. Let's say, uh, your chef makes X amount of money, but some guy came along and said, for the next two weeks, I'll do it for half the price. Are you gonna put that new chef in there for two weeks?
Yeah, and, and I, I get what you're saying there, yes, you know, there's, there's a loyalty aspect, but also there's two, you know, I gotta make sure my chef is, um, you know, I wanna take care of my chef, but also I gotta take care of my customers. Exactly. You know, so, um, at the end of the day, you know, I, I, I get what you're saying on it, you know, so, I mean, and, and also I see what you're saying as far as, you know, someone might be a great at doing sewer engineering, and someone might be great at doing, um, you know, building engineering, you know, it's just, you know, there, there's, there's all kinds of areas there, so opening that up to.
Billion engineers.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, right.
I thought it was worth looking into.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, the fire permits, we, do we need to discuss that if we can't get the brush picked up again, or is that what you're gonna?
I, I would like, I mean, I'd like to discuss it, cause I, I, I get a phone call almost every day about, what, what do I do? And even though we might have a solution, it's, um, you know, I, I, I'd like to hear, you know, if this is possible, you know, and any, you know, people might still wanna do brush pick up, people might wanna burn it right away.
It's a big old package, so we've got lots to look at there.
I think the, the first bullet point to me is enough to not do it.
First two pages are what we would want you to be aware of, and what we're concerned with. After that are just examples. And I don't think that that first bullet point will prevent me from passing a burning order, cause it's done everywhere around, I do want you to be aware of. And it runs from practically nothing burning to didn't burn anything. Very little regulation, and it depends on where you are, the majority of the, uh, limited regulations are in areas served by volunteer fire departments for obvious reasons. They don't have electricity station all the time to accept the application and, and enforce it. But I've got some things in there that I, I don't think you'll have time to look at tonight. I wish you'd just look at first two pages, and after that, there's some good examples, uh, Barry's got a great permit. I really liked their safety, they've got a good permit.
Do you have their?
At least in there.
Okay. Am I, I mean, it's like, we don't want, we don't want people burning like trash, I mean, that's nasty and whatever, but I, you know, I'm thinking about things, just.
Tea sticks does not allow any of that.
Yeah.
Uh, swivel has ordinance that just states you might fall to the grid, so you can burn leaves and brush. On the other hand, uh, we talked last time about common sense, if we've got a twenty-five foot burn pile that's ten feet deep in somebody's backyard, I would absolutely discourage you approving that.
Yeah.
But there's some examples in there, about three by three, or eight by eight, or ten by ten burn piles with limits of two or three feet. The problem that comes in is who's going to, who's going to go inspect them, who's going to enforce them?
There's enforcement.
Either you're gonna have an ordinance, you need to have some teeth in it, otherwise you're probably not gonna have any ones that's gonna adhere to it. It, it's gonna take some effort on somebody's park. If it's not here at City Hall, somebody needs to check every morning to make sure there's, uh, uh, not a prohibition on burning from the state, or if there's a, uh, a weather warning for thirty or forty mile an hour winds.
Yeah, and that, that, and that's why I think, like, it would, if we do something like that, we could basically do a burn permit, and in that permit, we can put, you know, you say, you, you adhere to say that I will be, you know, five by five fire. I know another problem, people said, well, back in the day, it used to be leaves, where the people were like, well, there is always burning leaves, you know? I mean, we can, we can put on it what we want with helping the brush issue, but I don't, I don't wanna say like, I don't think we should do an all or nothing, I think there's some room to negotiate here, it's just to help some people out.
I guess my question would be, could we wait and see if we can work out the brush, the brush situation, and then that could be a backup?
It's, it's up to y'all, I, I just.
I think that's, the, what's triggered this, is the brush right now.
Yeah, yeah. And so, I mean, again, like, I, I know.
Brush, then that's gonna be a problem for a while.
Yeah, and it, and I, I understand, you know, however y'all vote on it, I just know that they were asking about this a month and a half ago, so, they're, they're piling up, so.
Well, the people that asked me was like, fire pits and things like that, that you go out and sit around there night or whatever, was that legal?
But if, if we can't pick it up again, which I'm hoping is gonna go in that direction, that might be a solution to what your, your friends are asking about.
Well, I mean, I'm, I mean, if, if, if there, if, if the city can really look at this, like, I mean, hit it hard, I mean, I'll hold off on making a motion for a month.
I think we're just close.
Okay, okay, well, I'll hold off on it, but I think this is also good for possible future, you know, a possible future solution. Thank you for.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm still there, I'll shoot this over.
It's a great thing to read, anyway, it's really wonderful.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to new business now. Mr. Steve, you would like to recommend your new sewer plant hire, is that right? Could you stand up and tell us a little bit, or you have information you want to share?
General, we'll pass out this recommendation, uh, we advertise for a, uh, chief plant operator, we require a state of Tennessee certified three West Florida licenses. Uh, we had three applicants that were certified, and Ricky and I, we, we interviewed all three of them, and, uh, we both agreed that this recommendation would be the best hire for the town park. And, uh, so we're bringing it to you, asking the council to, to let us hire this employee. I think it'd be a, a very good hire if you could see a man for a sewer plant.
Level three? He's level three?
He's got a level three, also a collection.
What was all the other, how many other applications did you get?
We had two more besides him, we had three, three applicants, and we interviewed all three of them.
And what were their, did they have level threes?
One of them had a three and a collection one, and the other one was actually from Illinois. He had license, but I don't know exactly how they compared to Tennessee.
And I believe when we told him what his salary would be, he's.
Yeah, he kind of took himself out, but, uh, with this recommendation here, he was very knowledgeable on the layout or state permit or, uh, maintenance, plus having collection license after that, it was, he was very thorough, very thorough.
Y'all both like him?
I've worked with him several times.
Okay.
The different pages come up and we bang to him each other. He's very knowledgeable about permit.
I'm, make a motion we approve.
Okay.
One second.
Second, uh, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, Mr. Steve and Ricky, we've approved your, your hiring, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Okay, our budget amendment ordinance, which Ms. Jennifer has worked hard to put this together, you would.
So you got that in your packet tonight, um, it's just updated numbers from this fiscal year that we just ended, so we just have to do ordinance to amend it.
So it's, it's just the adding.
It's the final numbers.
The numbers that we didn't have in the other one.
Isn't that basically things that we've already discussed?
Yes, it is.
It's just because we.
The formality of it.
Cause we had to carry it out to the end of June.
Make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of, uh, accepting the budget amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Both.
Okay, one opposed, five for, thank you. Okay, the next is, okay, we're gonna read the second reading of the ordinance that we just had the public discussion on, uh, the ordinance to rezone Main Street.
That's that property up there by M two?
Right, do we need to formally read this again?
I think it's saying the, the, the yellow, yeah, that strip right there.
I think you all have a copy of that in your, in your packet there, you, it, does everyone have a copy?
No, I don't think that one's in there, cause it was the second, I didn't know that they did have a copy.
Oh, okay, it's, we, it's what we voted on last time, basically.
I'm, make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of, uh, accepting, well, uh, passing this, this ordinance?
Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry, all in favor of passing the ordinance, aye, please? All opposed? Thank you. Oh, well, we've already done number four, I shared that with you already, we did, okay, um, number five, we have an ice machine that went kaplunk, and it's gonna be four thousand five hundred fifty.
Where's the ice machine at? How big is it? I looked this one up.
It's about this big, and it's, it's, it's in the back.
Big as a gosh.
It's about this big, it's huge.
About like this, is it?
Yeah, yeah, and.
What do y'all, y'all like, use it for, uh, water coolers?
Yeah.
Okay, I saw some, um, I got one for like three grand, brand new, brand spanking new, rock and roll, I donate ice everywhere, I can't use enough ice on it, and it's, um, it was like three grand, um, I think it was like from Webster. Yeah, you just need one.
That's a little bit high to me, too.
Yeah.
I know experts on it, you know better than I do.
Yeah, um, and it was like, I got mine from Webster, and there's still other ones, I mean, I don't want you to be tied down to Webster, but I think you can do, I think you can save at least a thousand bucks on it.
The Gilmore's what we have right now, is that right, Les, or?
Yes.
Or what?
We have the skill note, that's what we have now, and you just called to see how much it would be, we, we can, we can check around a few places.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
You need one pretty quick, though.
How much ice you gonna go through?
It's hot there.
Yeah. Well, I don't know.
We don't go through that much, everybody else.
Yeah.
We're gonna call with the interest out, friggin', give you all my ice, I got so much ice.
Can you maybe, wherever you got yours, get an estimate there or something?
Yeah, you want me to just get it?
It's hot outside.
Can we like?
Go ahead and do it.
But can, can we like provision?
I'm sorry, Derek.
One of the requirements when we take our water sample.
Just, just.
Yeah, soon as possible, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, listen, Derek's got a comment.
One of the requirements, uh, when we take our water sample is we have to pack that in ice to take it to Mount Doolittle.
Can we use it also, and so does this department?
Yeah, I, I, I think she, let's approve it, and then we'll try to get a better price, so, so just approve for the best price.
Let's make sure we are comparing apples to apples. Do you know what size yours is, Les, back there, how, the capacity? Okay.
He said it's a two fifty, it's gonna go up to a five hundred.
Is it two fifty?
Is it two fifty big enough?
Yeah, it's probably. But he said that forty-five hundred would be, going to national figure it up, install and build, it's a little bit bigger, it would be a five hundred.
So it'd be bigger than the one we have now, then? Okay, can we get a price for the two fifty then? Did he give us a price?
He said the price was not much difference.
Oh, oh, okay.
I think we just need to approve up to forty-five hundred.
We're using our code, we're just changing the top bar.
Yeah, approve up to forty-five hundred and.
Is that all right with you, just approve up to forty-five, and you pick out what you need and just, I mean, you need it, it's a hundred degrees outside, so hit it.
Say that, uh, we need to know within a week or something like that.
Well, email me, if you want, email me that for some more, I'll get your price when I look around, I'll give you two of them.
Just get it right down.
Yeah.
If Cole can buy one for three thousand, that's fifteen hundred dollars difference.
Yeah, and I'll give a few, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna have anything, I just, I, I've seen them a lot cheaper, cause I had to shop for one.
Well, see what you find, and just let Les know, if we work, if that's legal to do it that way.
I say just. I make a motion, we approve them up to forty-five hundred dollars, and then you have at it, second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of approval up to forty-five hundred or less to finding your ice machine? Aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Les, you're on, okay. All right. Okay, the museum, one of, they're, they've got three HVAC units up there, one of them has, has had a problem with something, and now it's the compressor, we've had two different problems with it. What was the first problem, Les, do you remember?
Remember what the first was.
Okay. Okay, and I, can you, was it two thousand or?
Two thousand, uh, four or three when it was ready.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, then we have some estimates for if we just replace the whole unit, um.
How many ton is it? Three.
Three ton, two thousand three? Yeah, about that.
It's a three ton, so we got three different estimates, uh, one is from, uh, West Heating, which, for the three ton with a ten year warranty, one part year labor, it's, um, five thousand two, six hundred twenty-five. For H and H Heating, which is up in heating cooling and defeated, it'd be four nine, forty-nine hundred, and then Dyer emailed me that it is, it's gonna be close to seven thousand.
Between four and five is a good price on a five ton. Yeah, yeah.
So it would be, uh, we have two. So, it would be, we have two choices, we could put a compressor in and see how much longer it would work.
At 2,300, yeah, I'd say, let's go with that.
Little iPhone shot that one.
4,900.
Well, now, again, we've not, let's, do we have any thoughts about the two different companies, like, have you worked with them, and you have any thoughts? One is the West.
Well, Dyer's the one that we always use.
Yeah, but he's the 7,000.
But if HVAC can do a lot less money, I make a recommendation we go with them.
Yeah, so I motion to go with the 4,900 one and replace it.
Okay, that's H&amp;H Heating, have you worked with them?
No, I haven't worked with them.
Where are they at?
Well, they're in defeated, the other is West, and you worked with West?
Yeah.
Is that Jason West?
Jason West, yeah.
He's, he's pretty good. I don't know, y'all?
And what's the difference from H&amp;H and West?
It's, it's, one is 49, which is close to 5, and the other's 5,625 is the one he suggested. So, it's about $600, a little over $600.
I've dealt with H&amp;H, I didn't have a problem with them.
Yeah.
I've dealt with all of them, really, no problem with any of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, you wanna make a motion for that?
So, motion is to H&amp;H?
Yeah, the 4,900.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll contact Mr. Holloman, I believe it is, okay. Thank you. I'm sure the museum will be happy to have a little cooling out there again, okay. Okay, we have several ordinances that Mr. Duke, little history, the planning commission is doing amazing job of going through with Mr. Duke and Mr. Kopus, of going through our zoning ordinances and finding several that just are out of sync, maybe never fully got passed. He has some sort of super duper computer that just goes through and zaps everything that doesn't sink in line, so he and Mr. Kopus have spent an amazing amount of time, I just, I mean, it's just amazing what they have done, amazing. And, and he's, they've come up with these three different ordinances, five different ordinances, okay, and he's just gonna explain quickly for the first reading tonight, and if you have questions, but you really, we're really gonna have to take them home and kinda look over them, because I'll let you take it away, how's that? So, the first ordinance is to expand the description of facilities that treat substance use disorders with drugs and limit where the facilities can be located in the town of Carthage. I believe that's the M, is that M1 that we're talking about?
Each, each one of these are, they have the same number, except they have.
Do you wanna use our code, would that be helpful?
It works for everybody, it works for them.
Mr. Steve?
Clear you off a spot or something.
Be, be helpful if you could come up here and everybody could see, but I hate for you to have it, because it's heavy.
That's it. I love it, it's really light.
This is a two-man thing.
See, everybody's here.
All right, thank you, thank you.
All right. Let's see.
Maybe. So, we've got this.
If we don't mind, let's, let's go with first, first, I'll get it, it's numbered, it has a one, it's P201, 20190612 with parentheses, 1-1. And, and just a little bit of history, again, kinda how we got to this point, and we got five ordinances coming up. When I came on the planning commission, January, the first meeting we had, we had a plat to review and assign, or to look at the size for sign, and I, I didn't know, setback from a sinus headache when I first came on, so I, I had no idea, the only thing I knew to do was to go to the zoning code and look at that to see if it matched, to see whether it approved or whatever, so I went to the zoning code and looked at it, and sure enough, it matched. And then about two or three days later, you know, we said everything's okay, two or three days later, I was looking, and I found two ordinances that had been passed that conflicted with each other, and none of them matched what was on the zoning code. So, it's like, which one of the, now, wait a minute, we just approved something, is that, did that match what is really legal for it to be there in that zone? So, and then I started looking, I thought, well, this, this is, you know, something, so the more I looked, the more I found that actually our zoning code has not been updated with all the ordinances that's been passed since 19, of 1995 and 1996. So, really, really, if you look at our zoning code, it, what you see there, on the one that's, that was published on the internet, for everybody to look at on our website, was actually, it had, you know, 40 or 50 ordinances that's never been updated into that. And then I thought, well, this is bound not to be the only one that's a problem, and it wasn't. So, I started looking at different ordinances that passed, all those 40 or 50 ordinances that passed, and found out that most of them had conflicts between two. I, I think what happened was, somebody would do an ordinance, and then two or three later, years later, they forgot they did that ordinance, because it wasn't put in, the zoning code wasn't updated, and they passed another ordinance similar to that, but with something different. And so, those two conflicted as far as what to do, and it became, it's just really a mess, to be honest with you. So, so what I've, what I've done is I've gone through every ordinance since 199, every ordinance since 1995, here, I went through all the archives and looked at all of them, put them all together, put them in, digitized them, put them in the computer, started matching things up, and so hopefully, what, what, these five are just what I call the low-hanging fruit. These, these five here are just kind of a cleanup right now, we've got a whole lot more to go, so you'll be getting more ordinances. But basically, this is what, what these ordinances are, except, well, two of them, two of them are, you know, I'll explain that, but all these ordinances are just kinda cleanups, that's why they look so crazy. You've got lots of things that go from one place to the other place, and, and it gets confusing, but trust me, it's, there's method to this madness, it's all, once we get this done, it cleans things up a little bit. Also, I found out, when I started going through the ordinances, that I went back and matched the minutes to the ordinance, and found out that by due process, some of them wasn't, some of them didn't fit due process by Tennessee Code statutes. So, you know, there's certain things that you have to do by Tennessee Code for ordinance to pass, for particular ordinances. Some of them didn't have public hearings where they should have had public hearings, some things were passed that through the legislative body, when it was really supposed to go through the planning commission, everything by subdivision goes through the planning commission. So, there are just a lot of little things there. So, and then also, I looked at it, and some of these ordinances that were passed, even though they were passed, and you could see it on the minutes, they never got signed. So, they, oh, we had just a word copy of it, we never had actually a signed copy of the ordinance. So, anyway, all of this, basically, not all of it, but, but three out of five, basically just cleans a lot of it, and, and one of those is gonna clean up the map, too. The map is not right as well. So, the part of it, part of this will clean up the map, and hopefully, when we get everything done, get it correct, it's where things are really supposed to be on there, then we can get another map made, that'll be down the line, because it costs a lot of money to get those things done, so we'll make sure everything's like it should be first. So, anyway, let's, let's go with the first one, the 201906121, and that is the one that corrects things on the map. So, essentially, what, what this, this is about, and I'll be glad to answer questions, I know it gets confusing, but essentially, what this is doing is saying that what is correct on that map will stay correct on that map. We're, we're just reaffirming that that map is correct at that point, and then there's some things on here that adds to that map to make it more correct, and some things that's taken away. So, I mean, I could go through, we'll be here all night if I go through every single bit of this, but basically, it's just, it's correcting everything that's supposed to be on that map up to, to this date. Does that make sense? Okay, that's, that's one. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have.
Do we, do we need to vote on these individually, or should we vote on bulk, or?
We can vote on them bulk, I'm sorry, together. Whatever the motion is, you can, you can vote on them, there'll have to be a separate public hearing on each one individually before final passing, but if someone makes a motion to approve all of these together collectively, then, yeah, that can pass.
Okay, I've seen, like, before he did all these, we had to go back and do them, we just needed to vote at the end of each, each explanation?
Not necessarily, you can, however the board wants to take action on it. The only issue would be, is if, if for whatever reason you didn't wanna approve, you know, one of the ordinances, but then you would have to deal with that, so.
Y'all go with just voting in as a whole?
Let's listen to it all.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
It would all be lumped in, one that each one publicly?
It's a lot, it's language correction.
Yeah.
Well, yes, well, you can do them all.
In one public hearing?
In one public hearing, and then you'll just say, we're open in the public hearing ordinance due now.
And then you close it?
And then close it, and then go to the next one.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So, any, any questions on one then? I mean, I know it, I'm just, it's kinda.
You're doing great.
So far.
Better you than us.
Let's go home, right? Okay. Number two, basically, what this is, our, our ordinance is now, or, excuse me, our zoning code and our ordinance that modified the, the ones that has modified or amended the zoning code, basically just says, it describes a methadone clinic. Well, methadone clinics are good, but they ain't the only thing we got nowadays, you know, there's lots of other things. Now, that's, that's, you know, a lot, lot of other things to treat addiction with now. So, basically, what I did is I just, I built this one surrounding, what, or built it associated with things that, other ordinances I've seen in other cities that did the same thing, and it covers basically everything that might be wrong at somebody at a treatment center. And it, basically, what it's doing is such that somebody can't put a methadone clinic or one of these treatment facilities next door in the R1, R2, this just puts anything that relates to that in the medical area.
How would that go? We already have something downtown that is a treatment facility, are they grandfathered in at that point?
If they are, if any use is illegal, it's legal now, and you make a change to it, then they're legal non-conforming use.
You talking about on Main Street right there? I think it's, that's holistic, so it won't use any of these.
Is it holistic?
Yeah, if it's, if it, if it's not being treated with some type of controlled.
I've heard, now, don't, don't quote me, but I've heard.
Do you know Barbara? I thought there was some kind of.
I think it's more than holistic, he was doing new procedures, and they did ask me at one point, would it be permissible to dispense Suboxone?
Yeah, so.
Who is this?
I think it is a little bit more than holistic.
That's why.
The ones in South Carthage, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, if they're using narcotics, and that would.
The one on Main Street?
Yeah, it's like next to the help center.
I know.
It's like next to Debbie Holloman. You know, the empty building space between Debbie Holloman and, and the help center, those two empty buildings, one of them, we condemned both of them, and the other one may still be condemned, or something, but.
When we were still doing that.
Right.
Is he a physician?
He is a physician, Dr. Meda, actually, is his name, and he does, he tries to do procedures.
It's like a nerve block?
Yeah, like nerve blocks and things like that, that would be an alternative to narcotics, but, and so, that may be his total plan, I don't know, but I have had somebody from that office mention that if it was permissible, they could do Suboxone as well.
You have to have a special permit to do that, through the state of Tennessee.
To do Suboxone, yes.
You can't just start doing it on your own, you know, if you know your physician.
That's something.
It has to be licensed as a facility that does that.
And that, that would be two different things, if you had a medical, a place for medical procedures, it might even be a conflict if they were also prescribing Suboxone, I don't know.
Did Sunset Daniel through the council when they put it in?
We had, you remember, we talked about that, right after we passed the M1 or the medical district a couple of years ago, that was all going on, and that was still up in the air whether he was going in or not, because that's when you had condemned the building, and then he just did the work without, you know, any permits, and then next day, there was the business there.
Have you, have they been, I've never seen them open.
They're there.
I go by there a lot.
It's different hours.
Yeah.
But you'll see people in there.
But because there weren't permits, to my knowledge, we never really passed anything that would be, they were ready to open.
I remember.
I think he was building like cubicles instead of standard rockets.
But it took a long time to get there.
Was that, wouldn't that have been something that needed to pass, probably the zoning and maybe the council, too?
Yes. Well, since medical's not allowed there, it'd have to go to board zoning appeals for variance, or for, or special use.
Sounds like that's something we need to address.
I think so.
But if he's already done it, you got vested rights.
Well, that's, if it was, if it's never been legal, if it wasn't legal when he started operating, then he doesn't have any sort of right to.
It wouldn't. So, he's saying they didn't get a certificate of occupancy.
But, but then attorney just said if it was, say that again, please.
Well, if you don't, you only have a legal non-conformal right if, when you started it, it was legal to begin with, and then you changed the ordinance, and so somehow, determination would need to be made whether it was legal when he started operating it.
So, should we check on that?
Well, I mean, I think you could pass, you can go ahead and pass.
Yeah, for sure, because we passed it to try and keep him from going in, or that was part of it.
But he did anyway?
Best, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what happened, fell through the cracks on it.
This is 1996 ordinance, so this is, this is well before that.
You're talking about the medical district?
The medical district.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that like two years ago. We put it all up at the hospital.
Yeah.
So, can we?
So, I don't think that this, on this side, I think that's kind of a different issue.
We can still pass this.
Yeah, for sure, I'm just bringing that up.
To me, almost doesn't sound like an ordinance issue as it does a violation of, of an ordinance. I mean, as far as us voting on ordinance, it looks to me like the ordinance is in place, and he's in violation of the ordinance.
I would say, though, too, let's, let's.
He would be in violation of zoning ordinance, because he, he, C1's not, it has medical, it's the M1, so he's, he's in violation of the zoning.
Let's say, let's, let's see, you know, let's see if he is dispensing narcotics or if it is holistic, because I heard it was holistic, and now I'm hearing it's not, so let's get it, let's make sure we're working on facts, not what we heard.
Did you say it's more than holistic?
You can't swear to it without.
Yeah, and so, let's.
I don't swear to it.
Let's, yeah, let's operate, make sure we know facts.
Let me look on the state side, and see what he's, what he's licensed for.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's a holistic.
You have to have a special license to spend these things.
Just so we separate it out, that's, we can still vote on this.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't mean to derail us on that, but, but I had, but I've been having a question about that, and I've just kind of forgotten about it, but, but now it's brought back up, and something that we need to know.
We can check on that.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll look into it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll look into it.
We'll check on that.
And where is the medical district?
The blue, the blue spot.
Right there.
Based up at the, at the hospital.
Because there have been some other medical things, I remember a little bit of a discussion during that time that there've been some other medical things on Main Street.
There are, there's clinics out on Highway twenty-five that's not in the medical district as well.
Are they in the city though?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be in the old, um, movie theater building.
Yeah, the movie.
That's true, that's true.
What about chiropractor, would that?
Uh, well chiropractors allow, they're allowed in C two.
Okay. Well, I remember that discussion, if we'd let the chiropractor be in there, we'd have to let them, but, okay, that's good to know.
Um, okay, listen, any more questions on that or any more?
No, sir.
I'm glad you brought that up, we need to look into that. Okay, number three, which is P two oh one nine, zero one, two oh one nine zero six one two dash, or parentheses, three. Okay, this one is something new, um, in, in, in our zoning code, the definitions is in eleven two oh four, it's in section eleven two oh four, that's all definitions. And back, the way it was done is the way it was done years and years ago, everything got a sub, a number, a sub number, eleven two oh four, one, two, three, four, five. And then they were in alphabetical order, so basically anytime, any, most anytime you modify anything in the zoning code, you've got, you have to go back and either add a definition, change a definition, move a definition around. You know, and what happens is that screws up your numbering system, I mean, you know, basically all, so I've, I've noticed the new way of doing that now everywhere else, they, they don't, they don't number, they just have a, a single, uh, section. Eleven two oh four, and then everything is done in alphabetical order, the definitions, and so that, that's just the way to do it. So this is basically, this ordinance says, let's change it to that, so can we add, add things, all we gotta do is just move it around alphabetically, we don't have to change all the numbering systems. And, and just, that's, that's basically what this is. So it's, it's just, it's a lot of wording to say that, but, so that's, that's that one, okay. Okay, number four is an ordinance that's a sections and correction errors in the previous ordinance, four thirty-three, that amends official. Okay, four thirty-three, um, again, couldn't find the signed copy of that one. This one, um, has to do with, um, the, the medical, the, the medical area as well. And, uh, it's just, um, the, the main thing with this one is we don't have a signed, we don't have a signed ordinance for this, one of the things. The other thing too in this is when we add this new treatment center, then we're gonna have to change parts of the medical part of it to make sure the treatment center fits in with the, the new ordinance and the new, the ordinance as far as the medical goes. So that's in this one too, so it, it, there's a lot of things it does in there and, and we can, I can go over it, but that's basically what it amounts to. If that makes sense. It's, it's just a cleanup, really, basically, that's nothing really new, it's just a cleanup. Um, and then I put the exhibit A on there, so we're doing some rewording so you can just see what that is, but there's no, you know, it's, it's just a cleanup to make it legal. Uh, and then number five is correct ordinance four oh nine. And that has to do with the fact, once, basically this one, we, uh, although we have, we don't have an agriculture district now, but the zoning code says we do. But yet it hasn't, it doesn't have, it doesn't have that, it doesn't have any description for that district in there and doesn't have any, or, uh, zoning code for that, although it says we have it in there. Basically what happened was we changed that, I think back sometime ago, they changed that to RR, uh, rural, uh, yeah, so they changed that to RR. And I think probably because agriculture is, so you, you really can't, the planning, agriculture can get by with a lot of things that you can't control that very well, that's it.
Are the areas used for farming around Walmart, are, are they in the city?
The, yeah, right, they are in the city, they're in the RR section.
All right, is this, does this do away with that?
No, 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 no. What, what happened some years ago, and I think the reason why is because there were some, and he can probably talk to this better than I do, that, that agriculture became a thing that you, it's hard for you to, to control that very well. They, they can do things that we, the planning commission says you can't do, you know, they, pretty well. So, so if you've got RR, you can still do agriculture in RR, but yet we can have more control as far as, as limiting what can be done and, and, and controlling RR. So I think that's why they did it, so basically they changed a section of agriculture over to RR. Now, this is what I found as well too, a lot of these ordinances that were passed says, and that's why I'm saying we're just gonna have to go with that map there. Lot of them never gives, they don't give any, uh, surveying area, they don't give any lots or whatever, they just says, this area next to so and so is now RR. Didn't say how many acres it does, didn't say whatever it is, so, uh, so all we've got to go on is, is looking at it and saying, well, that's about where it's supposed to be, so.
So from understanding, all you're doing is replacing what's now in the codes or called A one to RR, you're just replacing that?
Right, it's, it's already been replaced, but a lot of places in there, it still talks about it as, as, whenever they, whenever they put it in the code, they didn't change some of the words in it.
We're just talking, changing terminology.
We're just changing. You have to match, so everything matches.
Okay.
And, and, so that's it.
Well, I motion we approve all of those to send to, the readings are, we gotta do the readings.
Yeah. Second. Second.
Pass them first readings, what you say. Second, any further discussion?
Thanks for all your work, it was a lot.
We got a lot more to go.
What's the bill?
I know the pay's really good. That's what keeps you going, yeah.
She was talking about that four thousand, I think that.
I think so, why not? Uh, any further discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so next week we'll have, or next month we'll have a public hearing on these, is there anything else that we haven't covered yet?
We got the grant writer and engineer report.
Um, what I was, I guess I'd, I'd spoken, just gone on this, um, we used to have, uh, reports given kind of in our report area. From our grant writers' report and our engineering report to hear what's going on with that, and I was wondering if we could start adding that back to our agendas starting next month. You know, I don't know if we need to a motion for that, but I would definitely like to, you know, be able to hear, even if it's nothing, obviously, you know, sometimes there's nothing, but we can hear those perspectives.
Or so like the beside grant and the.
Yeah, just a grant writer report and engineering report.
Yep, I'll make a motion that we add those to the next, start, we add those to the meeting minutes from now on, or the agenda from now on.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, add those to there, okay. Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.